I now call the August 25th, 2020 work session meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 6:00 PM. Councilman Bailey will give us the pledge of allegiance and Councilman Larson will give us the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for this opportunity to serve the city of Riverton. Thankful for the watchful eye, the blessings which we have in living in this part of thy vineyard. We're thankful, Father, for the citizens that represent us as policemen. For the servicemen that represent us in the safety of our country. We're thankful for all those that serve. We would ask, Father, that would bless us, that we might be mindful of them and our citizens here, that we might do the very best we can for them. We ask for your guiding hand and we say this homely, "Name thy son, Jesus Christ." Amen.
Would the city clerk please read, or please take roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. I declare a quorum as present. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
No moves, second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Riverton Medical District presentation. Here we go.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. I know on a Tuesday night, when you're not supposed to have a meeting, having you guys come in special for us is, we appreciate that. So, in working with the city and Tony and the mayor, we thought it would be a good idea to set this work session up just to make sure that everyone on the council was, and on the staff, was kind of up to date with where we were with the project. I know we had come a few meetings ago about our MOU and resolution to apply for our slip money. We'll talk about that a little bit later. But I'm gonna, a lot of this you guys already know, and the packet that was, Tony provided you the end of last week, I know you guys have seen a lot of that information before, so I'll move quickly through that and hopefully some new stuff will come up. And basically just wanted to get you guys up to speed on where we are with our project moving forward and see if there's a way that we can work together to make this a reality here. So with that, I'm gonna go through and then open it up for any questions that you guys might have and try to make it quick and efficient as I can. So, all right. Presentation up here, we're gonna review a few things today. You know, why we need a new hospital, what a new hospital will do for our community. We have a draft, our feasibility study, an audit was completed on it. And we're gonna talk about that today, the results of that audit, where we stand with sources of financing, and then just talk about what this project would mean as far as economic development goes. And then open it up for questions. I think Susan Getzinger's gonna help us when we get to the Ida Bailey Audit, so we'll tag-team that section. So first off, why do we need a new hospital? This first chart, I know you guys have seen some of this before, but I just want to review some of the documentation that we have of what's going on here in our town over the last few years. Lifelights in our town have doubled. In 2014, we had 155 air transfers and in 2019, we had 937. So, that's a 600% increase. And that is right around the same time that Sage West consolidated, started to consolidate services over to the lander facility. Going to the next slide. This is a letter from the Wyoming Trauma Committee, and I know this has been included in your packet. Let me kind of zoom in here. But the Wyoming Trauma Committee is the group of surgeons that meet once a quarter. Lisa Burton is the chairman of that from Cheyenne Regional Medical Center. And it was brought to their attention basically by the Casper surgeons on what they were seeing via Lifelight and from Fremont County. And they're seeing things that should be handled here in our county. Broken arms, hernias, those type of things. So they crafted a letter and submitted it to the Wyoming Department of Health and to the governor's office, just telling them what they're seeing on the ground. And this is a copy of that letter. Let's go on to the next slide. We had Tom Forsland, the former director of the Wyoming Department of Health, come in and do a walkthrough, an evaluation of what was happening here in Riverton. This was actually a year ago. He came through and had a tour of our hospital. And he put together this report for us. And I think his conclusion sums it up the best when he says, "In the future, it does not appear as if the Sage West Riverton Facility will be providing the same level of services it has historically provided. And as a result, residents of the Riverton area will need to drive, be driven, or transported to other facilities to receive those services. This trend of having to travel outside the community to receive medical services has already started and likely will continue moving forward." Let's go to our next slide. We have began a partnership with the Eastern Shoshone Tribe. We've decided the best place to build this new hospital will be in the Shoshone Business Park, which is just north of the Walmart. And we've been working with the Shoshone Tribe to figure out a way to make this happen. But this is a letter of support from them, it's been included in your packet. The Shoshone Tribe has offered to donate a million dollars' worth of land out there to get this project going. And I think that's a big statement, especially here in our town, that they'd be willing to do that. But they know that care needs to improve for their people and they're willing to make that commitment. So this is a letter from them, signed by Karen Schneider. This next slide talks about an article about healthcare costs in Wyoming. And this came out actually last summer also, in the Casper Star Tribune, about how much hospitals in Wyoming charge their residents. And this is a big, it's a big conundrum all over the state, but especially here in our county. And the results of this study concluded that all of Wyoming is more expensive. It's more expensive for residents here to get healthcare than almost anywhere in the country. On average, residents pay about 300% more than Medicare reimbursement rates for care. And there's a big debate on why this is happening. But the biggest reason is the volume of patients isn't as great. And so when there's not as many people going through the system, those costs are higher. So the average is 300, but we found it interesting that Sage West here in Fremont County is 800% more than the rest, than Medicare reimbursement. And the next closest is 500%, that's down in Evanston, another for-profit hospital. And like I said, the state average is around 300. So we are being charged exponentially more than the rest of the state as compared to our peers. These are all the reasons why we have undertaken this project. This last one, it's real small, and I did not include this one in your packet, but I wanted to touch on it real quick because it's important. This is a letter from Sage West. I, this past six months especially, I've had several meetings with the governor's office, governor's health policy advisor, the chief of staff, the leadership of the senate and the house. And Senator Bebaut has had me testify numerous times, more than I would like, about the situation that's here, but I'm willing to put in the time. But I had to testify in front of the Joint Appropriations Committee, I think the second week in July, because Senator Bebaut was trying to figure out some ways for rural hospitals to use this CARES money to improve healthcare in our Wyoming communities. Well, I testified and legislators asked me questions and I answered them, told them what was going on here. Well, the next day, Sage West came out with a letter and basically kind of called me out, questioned my integrity and character and honesty, and then listed all the great things that they're doing for Fremont County and Riverton especially. Well, this made my mom really mad, but I told my mom I've been called a lot worse than this. And there's a couple of points in here, and I only highlighted one, but one struck me in particular. But Sage West leadership said that currently, in this letter, there are over 60 physicians on staff at the Riverton campus. And I think we all know that there are not 60 physicians on staff here at the Riverton Hospital. Actually, I know from employees that work there that there's never more than two to three doctors there at one time. But this is, this is why I'm doing this, this is why our group is doing this, is it's been hard to get an honest answer from Sage West. We've tried really hard over the last two years to sit down and come to a compromise and that's why we've decided to go down this particular path. You know, in Wyoming, the reason I brought my family back here, you know, Wyoming, we're blue collar, we're hard workers, we're a little rough around the edges, I think. Part of that's probably because of the weather here. But one thing, we're not stupid, okay? And we know when we're being told the truth and when we're not. And this is, this is not the truth. And this is why we have, like I said, gone down this path of trying to make this happen. So this is all the supporting information of what is actually happening on the ground. It's not us saying it, these are outside professionals that have made these evaluations of what's happening here in Riverton. And, you know, there comes a point where, as a council, as a community, we have to look ourselves in the mirror and decide, you know, is this good enough for our families, for our community, for the long term and the future here? Is, where do we want to see Riverton in the next 10, 20, 30 years from now? Is this acceptable to us? And I think Councilman Larson said it wonderfully at the last meeting I was at. He said, you know, sometime you gotta put your big boy pants on and get to work. And so that's what we've done and that's why we're trudging forward to find a way to get this done. All right, moving on to that next section, what a new hospital will do for our community. Now, we had plans in place for a hospital with under 20 beds, building a hospital that fits our community. Our hospital right now is too big for what we need. It has almost 70 beds up there. Cody's Hospital has an average census of about 10. There's 10 patients in there on average every day. We're a little bit smaller than that. We don't need a 68-bed hospital, so we put plans together for a hospital that's under 20 beds. We had these plans in place, well then COVID hits. And it's totally changed the way that we'll have to design the hospital going forward. And the good news is, a lot of these changes will, because they'll be planned from the beginning, don't add a tremendous, they're gonna add cost, but they're a lot easier to make when you start from the ground up. So, our new hospital, we aim to make it Central Wyoming and Western Wyoming's hospital to treat public healthcare crises. And it's gonna help improve access for the 22,000 residents on this side of the county. We're gonna be the first pandemic-ready hospital in the state. Like I said, it's gonna serve Western Wyoming's, as Western Wyoming's treatment hub for future pandemics. And through that innovative design that I talked about, you can create separate ventilation systems, negative pressure ventilation systems that isolate patients from staff and doctors to keep patients healthy. All these types of different architectural designs are being implemented into healthcare facilities now. I think we included a couple of articles from the Wall Street Journal in our last packet that talked about what kind of designs are being done. Parking lots are bigger, you have to turn your parking lot into temporary testing areas. You have to increase square footage to create the space needed to keep patients and staff safe at the same time. We feel like this is an opportunity for Riverton to become a model for the rest of the state as far as hospital design goes. The hospital's gonna be telehealth-focused. Living in a remote area like Riverton, it's important to emphasize the telehealth aspects of what we're doing here, to create those virtual visits, to be able to see those specialists that we're not gonna have here. And I don't want, I don't want anybody to get confused with what we're, we're trying to provide basic services to our city, okay? We want to be able to have, when you have a broken arm or a hernia or need your appendix out, you can go up to our hospital and get it done. Are we gonna have cardiac care and those advanced specialties? No. There's still gonna be, there's still gonna be lifelights out of here, it's just a fact, there always has been. But there needs to be a lot less of those type of things. And telehealth will help us dial in some of those specialists that we need to work with. It's gonna improve health outcomes for tribal members. And I think this is why the Shoshone Tribe has worked so hard with us to try to make this happen. Various health issues, our tribal members are at higher risk for diabetes and heart conditions. Living conditions make them more susceptible. And that's why Fremont County has been the epicenter of this COVID-19 outbreak with, you know, all the deaths being from tribal members. And it's extremely hard, the Lifelight factor and the transfer factor for our tribal members. I mean, it's not only traumatic on the patient, being lifelighted to Casper, to Salt Lake, or to Billings, but the family members that have to travel after that patient. It's very difficult on them. I know the Shoshone Tribe and Northern Rappahoe Tribe, they've set aside money to help out families, to take care of hotel costs and travel costs, to go pick up family members that have been transferred to facilities outside of Fremont County. And of course, we've talked about using the Eastern Shoshone Business Park as the site of our hospital. This is a designated, federally designated opportunity zone, which I think is gonna open up some other opportunities for grants. There's these things called new market tax credits that we might talk about a little bit later that could help pay for some of the project going forward. And then lastly, we've touched on this, but it's gonna provide these essential services, the basic services. We haven't had a baby born here, you know, since 2016. And it's gonna provide those essential services for the 22,000 residents on this side of the county. This just shows the air transfer numbers again. And then the Wyoming Department of Health did a hospital viability study a little bit less than a year ago. That's something that Senator Bebaut had the Wyoming Health Department look into. And in that study, it just, it says it, Riverton stands out as having some of the worst access to hospital services in the state. All right. So, that's what our new hospital will bring. We have had a feasibility study completed. We actually had the initial one done about a year ago. And then feasibility studies, depending on what avenue of financing you go through, and we're looking, and we're gonna talk about USDA, but these feasibility studies have to be crafted in a way that USDA will accept these studies. So, we went back to Stroud Water, that was the company that we used. And we told them that USDA was probably gonna be the route we're gonna go. And so they kind of changed the look of the feasibility study and we made some modifications just to make sure that we were only building exactly what was necessary for our community here. And that ended up being completed, that second round, the end of the spring. Well then, USDA requires basically a feasibility study of your feasibility study, an outside independent audit of that, just to make sure that you're just not paying for the answers that you want to hear. And I get it. So we interviewed a couple of different CPA firms. Ida Bailey has the best reputation in the country, no one does more USDA audits. And no one has gotten more USDA projects through than Ida Bailey. And so they've been working all summer on auditing Stroud Water's numbers. And they have completed the draft copy of this audit. And I think Susan was gonna come up and talk a little bit about that. She's our former hospital CFO and numbers expert.
Mayor, is there any way we could blow that up? I can't really read it from here, I'd just like to look those numbers a little better if possible.
Enlarge is a better word than blow up.
I'm working on my vocabulary, thank you.
We'll try, see what we can do.
He said we were rough around the edges.
Thank you.
Can you read that, Annie?
Yeah, I can make that a lot better, thank you.
We can get you a hard copy too.
Yeah, we can provide copies of that.
So was this in our packet?
This was not.
This was not. So, and I apologize to Alan in the audience because we did tell ID Inc., you know, as soon as we got this audit back, we would sit down with them and go through it. So Alan, I apologize. We got this draft last week, we had a quick meeting. This is still in draft mode, they still wanted to spend some time on the salaries and wages. But this meeting came up and we just felt it was important enough to be included. So we still will be sitting down with ID Inc. and reviewing it when we get our final. But I don't, I don't think it's gonna change materially. So, my biggest comments on this were, just like court reiterated, we did the initial feasibility study. It was almost a year old, the data that they used, so they had to update again. We paid Stroud Water to do that. And then it required this examination opinion. USDA requires an independent audit of those numbers. Typically, if we were a going concern, we were a hospital and we were gonna do an expansion or, you know, add some major infrastructure going through USDA, we would have prepared our own financial statements, you know, internally. And then there would have been an external audit, like an Ida Bailey firm that would audit those. Since we didn't, we're not a going concern, Stroud Water was kind of, they're the ones that created, you know, that for us, especially for a brand-new hospital. So, not normally, like when they did Westward Heights, they prepared their information internally, had an external audit with their USDA application. The thing that I think struck me most, and you're not gonna really care unless you're a numbers person, but the Stroud Water numbers were not materially different than what Ida Bailey came up with. So, Ida Bailey went back and forth with them. They used their own sets of data to verify volume. volume assumptions, and then also for all the expense assumptions. Stroud Water kinda had probably about four major, four or five major expense categories. The Ida Bailey P and L that you see here is exactly what I'm used to in the world of healthcare. This is a healthcare, total healthcare P and L. So, I was, I was impressed that they were not materially different. So, I don't have, I mean, I could go through each one, but they just use, you know, standards. Of course, one of the big items on our P and L is gonna be interest expense, and then this next page will see the debt service and so on. But what you can see, and we met with some of you preliminarily the last time, and those were the Stroud Water statements before they'd been shipped off to Ida Bailey, but we were showing a profit, you know, a positive P and L, you know, going into that year two and three. Ida Bailey didn't give us the rest yet, the years after this, although they have all that data, 'cause they project out. USDA just requires this five-year period, so that's why we're seeing this here. But in our discussions with them, they'll give us those numbers, and it's not part of the USDA application, but we can use it as supplemental information, but it continues to be, continues to be profitable. I didn't see anything highly unusual. I think, as we talk about economic development, and we've recently had, you know, a vote in our, in our city, in our county for that, that $13 million payroll is, is pretty significant. The full-time equivalent FTE numbers aren't printed on the financial statements, but by year 2025, it's 129 FTEs, and it continues to grow as the years come up. So, 129 FTEs, 14 of those being physicians or licensed professionals like CRNAs, PAs, nurse practitioners, so, you know, there's 14.2 of those. Roughly 40, I don't have my paper in front of me, but 40 to 45 nursing positions, and then the rest is ancillary and overhead positions. So, some good-paying jobs. Average hourly rate I calculated for 2025 is, is right around $51, you know, all in, averaged. So, that's, that's a pretty substantial, you know, AHR. Of course, it's weighted heavily with the physician salaries, 'cause our, our plan is that we're employing the physicians, which is common pretty much anymore in this industry, employing physicians. The physicians don't want typically the headache of running their own business, keeping up with all the billing regulations, so that's why the salary numbers look kinda high, but it's because we're employing the physicians in here, including the surgeons, so. So, this is the cash flow statement and the debt service statement that USDA typically looks at. So, again, we just take the P and L numbers that we just looked at, we've got our interest expense, depreciation expense, and then, of course, our debt service, which would be the loans. Then we have, the EHR stands for electronic health record, and that's mostly for the infrastructure, for all the tablets, laptops, you know, all the wiring, you know, everything associated with an electronic health record. It's broken out here, we've been having discussions back and forth whether we should acquire that from USDA, do our own loans, so the way they've broken it out is they have it at a higher interest rate than the USDA loan for the infrastructure or the capital for the building, so that's why it's broken out separate, if you're wondering that. And I can go back to these after I just flipped, too, there's just these three slides on the And then what we have here is what they call the debt service. USDA, they like to see a debt service in order for them to finance a project, 1.25 on up. You get up around 1.5, and they're, they're pretty comfortable with it. So, that's what we've learned, not that we know that, but that's what all of our consultants, Ida Bailey has told us, that's, that's what they've seen in their experience. The other thing that happens in a USDA application is they do what they call sensitivity analyses, and so they'll say, well, kind of a what-if, and so it says, well, what if this is higher, or what if this is lower? So, you see a couple sensitivities on there, and again, these will all be being prepared concurrent before, before the, you know, before anything. And we have been talking about, you know, as far as economic growth, of course, our group is very biased in thinking that this would be an ideal project for the tax levy for economic development, but, you know, of course, we're a little, we're a little biased in that, in that respect. But they ran the debt load without any, any tax levy, they also ran one with a million, we go, why'd you run one with a million? That's, that's not ever gonna happen. They just said they have to kinda do both, both ends. If they're gonna do one without, they just, they just kinda picked a bigger number and doubled it and went with it. And then, and then if we do roll in our EHR with the USDA, that's, that's what the final, final line is. So, that's, those are different scenarios, so those three are kinda different scenarios. So, those are my questions, or my comments regarding pricing, like Court pointed out at the time that Casper Star Tribune article came out, you know, it showed Sage West, you have a charge algorithm when you're setting prices, 'cause you never wanna set your price below what Medicare pays, 'cause Medicare is smart enough, believe it or not, they are smart enough to pay the lesser of what their published fee schedule is or what you charge. So, if you have something bad in your charge master, and someone made a typo when they set it up, and you should've been charging 100, and it's only 10, and Medicare would've paid, you know, 80, they'll, they'll pay the 10. They're, that's the one thing they're very smart about, so you can rest assured at night, you know, taxpayer dollars are hard at work. So, when they did the pricing for this, that was one of the things that we have been very sensitive to. They used, Ida Bailey and Stroud Water both used statewide Wyoming average, which currently is about, you know, four times what Medicare pays, to, just to set your gross charge price. So, we did not use an inflated, we didn't use what Sage West's algorithm is currently, so we used 400% of Medicare. And honestly, for most of the payers anymore, I mean, Medicare, it doesn't matter what you charge, Medicare pays a fixed amount, same thing with Medicaid, same thing, Indian Health Services, they pay on the Medicare schedule, so it's fixed. Depending on what kinda contract they have, they might have a contract with, you know, Aetna or Blue Cross, and most of those PPO contracts, preferred provider contracts that I've seen, they've started to go, you know, you know, Medicare, you know, times two, and so they're also starting to, it used to be percent of charge. In Wyoming, it was a percent of charge. Well, the hospitals soon figured out, if you needed to get any extra income, you just raised the rates, and on your commercial insurance, you know, if you were paying 80% of charges, then you got 80%. Well, now, I think those contracts have also changed, so a lot of it is fixed, so about 70 to 80%, it doesn't matter what you charge, other than for a person without insurance, self-pay, or if you're on a percent of charge contract, but we did wanna be sensitive to that. And I will tell you, Stroud Water, Ida Bailey, any consultant that we've ever talked to, they, they tell us, drop OB, it doesn't pay for itself, and we've just said, that's what our community, in the community surveys, that was a big deal. So, it is in there, we're committed to being a community hospital. We know that service line is not gonna make us money, but we know we need to provide the service, so. So, I think those are high points.
Tim, do you have a question?
I was just gonna ask, at least as far as you know now, how many doctors, nurses, what kind of specialties, what are you looking at right now? I know one of the big things you're saying has been surgery.
So, that, the 14 physicians that, that we have in our plan, so we want a general, we want general surgery, orthopedic surgery, basic orthopedic surgery, and then there's a lot of primary care, and then OB-GYN. So, I think we've got two OB-GYN providers, one general, you know, 1.2 orthopedic, which, you know, how do you get a 20% of a person?
You're gonna divide somebody?
Yeah, we're just gonna use their knees, if they're good knees, or their shoulders, whatever.
Which they should be.
Whichever 20% looks the best, maybe it's their arms, I don't know. So, yeah, so there's a lot of primary care, and basic, again, like Court said, we're not looking to do cardiac, we're not looking to do neurology, we're not looking to do, you know, any of the big specialties, we just want good, basic, community services, get a good base, and, and see what the community needs.
Councilman Bailey?
Susan, you said one point something OB, how are you gonna cover 24-hour OB with one person? That's, as I understand it...
We had two OB GYNs, we had two OBs, and it's, it's gonna be a challenge, and that's been, that was a challenge we had before. OB-GYN is probably, that's gonna be the hard part. Part of our plan is if, and there still are some out there, but part of it, and it's gonna be difficult, and you'll know, you know, there are family practice doctors that still, still deliver babies, but we have had a lot of support from, especially Hot Springs County, about supporting us. They don't wanna work here full-time, but if they need someone to work a week, they wanna support us in that effort. So, and I've, and you can ask these guys, because I keep saying, this is, this is not gonna be an easy thing, we have to be extremely creative, we have to be extremely creative, but I know there are small rural hospitals where they're bringing in, where they don't have any orthopedics at all, and they're bringing them in, they're renting docs, there's companies out there that, that, that's the model, because there are a lot more rural areas with hospital services, and some of them have a lot more services than we do here in Riverton, especially in Colorado, Kansas, some of those areas.
Councilman Larson?
When you say only two baby doctors, most babies are not delivered by doctors, they're delivered by nurses who are on-call, who are there, and the doctor shows up, Esther, he's been called. So, I don't think that's a big, a big thing. My real question is, when we stated we're only gonna have a hospital bed for 15 people or 20 people, I've been here long enough, and so has Mike, so has the mayor, when we've seen that hospital full, and not once or not twice, there were no beds available, and so you had to go to, you had to go to Lander. So, the thought of build small and we'll make it do doesn't really sound very, especially with this present calamity that we're experiencing called COVID-19, doesn't sound very futuristic.
Well, I don't know how many years ago you're talking, but I can remember days, and we're talking average daily census. So, we do have in here, I think we, the current model has 19 beds, but the length is, what's happened in the last 10 years and the last five years, the shift, the shift from what has always before been an inpatient service to an outpatient service, total hips are now considered, there's a Medicare, you know, fixed payment for a hip replacement, which five years ago, that was not even thought of, that was an inpatient-only service. Now, it's done on an outpatient basis, a number of total hips are done within 24 hours. So, you are rotating those patients. I don't think we're gonna, so your average daily census is, is a little bit different, and technology, you know, hernias, it used to be you were in there for a while, you know, they opened you up, now it's laparoscopic, and they've got the high-tech mesh, it's, you know, outpatient, you, you might spend the night if you go in the hernia late, but the other thing that USDA told us to be very sensitive about, and our consultants, was if we just built an extra wing in there, they're not gonna fund it anyway, because if our volumes, we've had tried to be conservative on the volumes, we are looking at our primary service area, we are not looking at Lander, we're not looking at that part of the county, we do not wanna impact what is happening in Lander. Lander's got a fully functioning hospital, that is not what we're about. We are about providing those same services here in this community. So, out of all of that, between technology and, and even total knees are to the point where they've actually published an inpatient, or an outpatient, an outpatient fee schedule for total, total knee replacements. And again, when I had my knee, if, I don't know, I don't know how it would've gotten out in 24 hours, but, but the technology has changed so much. Mine was done 10 years ago, but it's just, it's amazing. So, and even moms with babies, I mean, again, Kyle, when you had your, and you know people, I mean, when your wives were in there, and, or Carla, when you were in there, I mean, three, four days, I mean, gosh, it is amazing to me, they're out, they go in in the afternoon or mid-morning, and they're out the next morning at 7:00 AM, and they're feeling great, and it's, it's incredible to me, but, so I think those technologies...
You're really saying the technology has improved so, so remarkably, that 60-bed hospital is now 20 because of the technology?
They are licensed for 70 beds. I will tell you, they never, you know, we never used 70, during the time I was there, I can't speak to the last five years, and, and I won't, but we never used those 70. There were days when, during...
But you didn't have a, you didn't have a pandemic either.
And I think there's four currently hospitalized in the entire county, unless there's some new number as of...
Five.
Five, okay, so now it's five. Five is not a huge impact. The other thing, well, I won't get into the pandemic, but we're getting off course, but...
So, you are building this model exactly so that FDA can fund it?
Um, not just that they'll fund it...
Not FDA, I'm sorry.
USDA.
USDA.
Just that it's suitable for the volume that we have projected. If we find out in five years that we do need more volume, we will be going after financing to increase that volume, but we need to justify it. And we've been to the Cody Hospital a couple of times, and we've looked at their operation, and it's, it's amazing to me, when, when we were there, looking at that turnover of the patients, so you still have the same volume of patients, they're just not always there, and quite honestly, in the summers, even when I was up there, you know, 10 years ago as a CFO, we had days we had two people. So, you have those periods of time, you know, that you do need more beds. We also have one of the architects to design that the ER can have some holding beds, you know, because a lot of times you have some observation, and it takes a while to get tests back, rather than shuffling them down to a room and taking up a bed that might be needed, we, we have them near the ER. And the other thing is, is we want, Cody has this, and a number of hospitals have done this, rather than a total segregated ICU, we have the capability for a couple of the rooms to be, to house an ICU patient, so you don't have this total segregated unit, and that, that's also a new thing in technology, because you just can't, that, that volume, and we don't have a pulmonologist, we don't have some of the high-level specialties, so ICU is not going to be a huge part of our service line, we did not have huge volume in that service line.
Councilman Bailey?
Again, thanks, Susan. Again, thanks, Susan. And I'm sort of a numbers guy too, and on your previous chart there, I noticed your net operating loss is like almost $2 million in the second year and 2.6. Again, still pretty small, but I guess that's the part that concerns me is just, I mean, you've got about $4 or $5 million that you're losing there in the first four or five years.
Right.
I mean, that's the concerning part.
We're not seeing patients, and we just started seeing patients in 2023 there, so the revenues start coming in. And so they build a ramp up, if you will, in the numbers, and Susan?
Okay, so, so the first two years don't have any income, basically?
Right.
Just construction.
Let me go back.
Okay, all right, well, that makes a little more sense.
So 2023, you start, I think we've got like a half a year, you know, just a partial year in 2023, again, trying to be conservative. So, yeah, so the P and L is, you know, different than your cash flow, but you do need a, a strong P and L in order to generate cash flow.
So is that initial ramping up loss built into your financing?
Yes, so our initial operating cap, so that's, yeah, this is the P and L from the operations, but for us to get started, there's other cash that's going to be needed to get started. Cause in addition, you know, even once we send out a bill, you, you know, when you open the doors, you gotta get certified by Medicare. There's gonna be 60 to 90 days before you start getting any cash in, and so that's.
And this model takes into account the working capital?
The working capital.
Okay, well, I guess that was, I was assuming since you were showing it as a P and L that it was actually, so it's just L, no P?
Yeah, that's right. There's a lot of L in that, in that beginning part, you're right, you're right.
Just like any other business, so.
Yes, yeah.
And then, I, I guess the other question I had, sorry, is of the services you guys are offering, which I think are pretty appropriate, not very many of those, from what we're seeing from Sage West's numbers on how many transfers are going out, I don't know if any of your services are really gonna be replacing, you know, those services that are getting lifelighted to Denver, Casper, or whatever, you know, major cardiology, neurology, some of those kind of things, so.
Well, we, you know, as part of this, when, when did we do that, Court? This spring, last year? We, I said, we were trying to figure out what, what services we're leaving. You know, we, we are having, we had all this, you know, the trauma letter, we had all these stories that continue to come to us. I'm a data person, and I said, well, you know, the state administers Medicaid, I said, Court, we could do, we could do a public information request and request the Medicaid transfers and, and at least see what's going out. It would just be the Medicaid payer, you know, but it would give us a snapshot. Little did I know, and I didn't even know this even the time I was in the CFO, and maybe it came after, they keep a database, the state has a database of all payers. We didn't see it by pair, but we got the entire, not between the two facilities, but out of the county transfers. And it was by, I, I had requested it by MDC, which is just a, a major category. You're familiar with MDC. Instead, we got it by ICD-9, ICD-10 code. It had every, it was 18 pages of data. And if there was less than three patients with a particular ICD-10, they, they didn't even, they didn't even put the numbers there, they just, they just blacked them out. So we couldn't see, so we knew there was less, you know, just a few of them. And we got that data. There's a ton of cardiac, I, I told the group, I see, I see why Sage West is, is looking at a cardiac program. But also in there were, there were a lot. And when I was there, we had three general surgeons. We have less medical providers in this county since they've consolidated services. And I don't think anybody can argue about that fact. They can say however many on the medical staff, not all of those 60 physicians admit or do anything besides order, you know, therapies. So we used to have three general surgeons, we're down to two. We used to have three to four or five orthopedic physicians, we're down to two. And look at the plethora, I mean, St. John's from Jackson, Casper cannot even find enough rental space for their specialties to come over here. They're like, you guys have got to do something, so.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I think you're thinking small. I understand your funding principles, but the supply and demand for healthcare is you go where you get the service. I go to Salt Lake City, I spend two days down there every three months. Why? Cause it's not offered in here. And the people offer service. I'm 77 years old, and let me tell you, Sage West, that letter that I read that they sent to you is so full of wrong statements, it's unbelievable. I've been in meetings with those individuals, they will tell you the sky is blue when it's raining and expect you to believe it. So, I mean, this is wonderful, so what do you want us to do? What can we do to help you?
We're gonna get to that.
Would anyone else have anything for me?
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing? Sometimes Susan starts going over those numbers, and, but they're very important, and you can see why she's been such a great asset to what, what we've got going on here. I agree with Councilman Larson. I think if we build this, the people will come, they do. But the bottom line is, we've gotta build it so we get financed. So let's build it, fill it, and then we'll expand. I think that's, that's the route we gotta take. Okay. Next up, I, Vivian said I should've opened with, with this, cause I should've let the, no, this is gonna, our path has changed probably about five times since I've been working on this for, for two years. But of course, we went before the SLIB board a couple of weeks ago, and we worked so hard to get the MOU and the resolution passed, we appreciate your hard work, and Tony was working his tail off getting that ready. And we go down there, and of course, they wanted to give us the money. I don't know if anybody watched that meeting. But the rule is, your structure had to be complete by December 30th. We qualified for the money, but they felt that, of course, our hospital's not gonna be done. And we were honest about it and said it wasn't gonna be done. A lot of other hospitals around the state are getting funding to basically gut their hospitals and redo it, and they said that they could be done by the end of the year. And I had a meeting with Chris, our own auditor, Kristi Racinas. She invited me over to her house to, to discuss this, and Vivian and I were there. She assured me that contractors are gonna have to sign agreements that they'll be done by the end of the year, and they aren't gonna release money, they'll release money as the bills come in. So if they're not complete by the end of the year, they're gonna have to pay for the project themselves. So that made me feel a little bit better going, going forward. Now, if the guidance changes, there's been talk that they may give states more time to use the COVID money and change the guidance. There's been talk of September 30 of 2021. If that guidance changes, we're gonna apply again for it and, and see if we can get some of that money. Cause there's a lot out there, I just have a feeling that we're gonna end up sending a lot of this back home because right now the guidelines are so strict. So that is the update on the, the SLIB and the CARES Act funding. I, I wanna let everybody know that that, all of your guys' hard work was, was for something. The, all the, it was a 13-hour meeting for the SLIB board that day, and I stayed on until probably about 7:45 PM, I got to talk about our project. And Senator Bebaut, Representative Miller did a wonderful job representing our community here, letting them know, every elected official knows what's going on here. And Auditor Racinas did a wonderful job. She was with her grandma in our hospital in February, her grandma passed away, just from old age. But she got a three-day experience in our hospital, and she called it a big empty building with an urgent care. The staff, and, and I wanna make this point very clear, the staff and doctors up there are our family and friends, okay? And we, they, they're working their tails off up there, and we appreciate them so much. This is not, we support them 100%, we just wanna give them, you know, somewhere where they can be proud to work. And she said the doctors were wonderful, the hospitalist was wonderful. For the six hours, the hospitalist was there with her grandma. And then at night, it was hard to find a doc, cause the one ER physician mans the whole ship during, during the evening. So every elected official down there knows what's going on, and I feel like they are looking for ways to help us find a way to make this happen. So our hard work was, wasn't worth it. Okay, these two items, and I'll, I'll pick it up here a little bit. I had included in your packet, there's a Build Wyoming program, and I printed out the statute for you. And this was a statute that was passed in 2018, and Speaker Harshman called me earlier in the summer and recommended us looking into this program. It's $400 million through the Permanent Minerals Trust Fund. That 200 million of that can be used to give out low-interest loans to governmental entities in the state to improve infrastructure. The interest rate is wonderful, you can go 25 years at 2.5%. And I thought, man, this might be a way to do it. The city would have to own the land and the structure, just kind of what we talked about previously with this CARES money. Everything looked really good with it, and then I really started looking at it actually over the weekend, and I, I texted Tony, cause there's a, this Attorney General's our hangup right now. But there's a statutory debt limit that every county, city has to stay within. And that is a percentage of your assessed property value. And for the city of Riverton, for all cities, it's 4% of your assessed property value. So we could take out a loan for a little over $3 million bucks, I think. Well, that's a little bit short than our 35 million that we need to get this built. We could take it to a vote of the city and do a special election to give you guys permission to go ahead and, and borrow the money. I don't think we wanna go down that road at this point. I understand why that's in place. You know, it prevents, you know, the mayor from coming to you guys and telling you guys to buy a Learjet for him, take out a $20 million loan and, and put the city in bad shape unless there's a vote of the community. So I, I was hopeful at first, but this seems like this Wyoming capital construction loan, loan program is not the route we wanna go. And so now we're back at the USDA route. And with the USDA route, the city does not have to own the, the structure. So Vivian wanted me to let you guys know that. Cause I, I know that, you know, it would take a lot of work for the city and us to work together. I think we can do it if we have to, and I'm willing to put in the work, and I feel like you guys are too, to, to make it happen. But the USDA route that we plan to pursue does not require the city to own it, or nonprofit can, can go that route. So, um, let's talk about the USDA route.
Court?
Yes?
Do we have to own the land?
No.
We don't have to loan, we don't have to own any entity? Perfect.
Nothing.
Thank you.
Yes. Now, the USDA route, we have, we've tailored our feasibility study, our audit for that. We've designed it for that. They usually like to see 10% down, okay? They want the communities that they support to have some skin in the game. And that 10% is just kind of the number that I Bailey and Stroudwater has set to us. So, you know, somewhere in the $3 to $4 million range is, I think, what we need to get this going. And, you know, with the city's hard work and, and our community members' hard work, this half-cent economic development passed with flying colors this past election. And so we're gonna use this to talk a little bit about economic development. And like Susan said earlier, we feel like no other project, probably since the community college, would be as big of economic development project than, than this one. So this leads me into the last topic here, and, just hit the slide. Oh, okay, this is our video. You guys probably saw this, but I like the music the best. All right, Cindy McDonald put that together for us who's here tonight, and she's been our, our marketing expert, so I'd like to thank her, but. The last thing we're gonna talk about is the economic impact of this project on our community going forward. This, these are, the American Medical Association puts out these studies, and they've actually updated the numbers since I looked at them last. But this goes into what economic impact doctors and, and healthcare has on communities. And actually, we can single out Wyoming here. And so what we did is we clicked on Wyoming, there's 875 physicians providing care in our state. The number here on the lower right is the one I'd like to talk about. 9.8 jobs supported by each physician, okay? So back when our hospital was a full-service hospital, we had almost 25 docs up there. You know, now we have under 10 up here. You can see the financial impact of that, but that's almost 140 new jobs. Our audit and FTEs that Susan said was about 130 jobs. We're gonna pay our employees a little bit better, we've talked with other hospitals. And so that's why we're not quite getting to 140, but 9.8 jobs per doc. Next slide. In the upper-left corner for the state of Wyoming, $1.8 million of economic impact per, per each physician. That's $25 million of economic impact per year, the 14 docs that we're bringing in. This was not in your packet, I can get you a hard copy of this too. The number here on the lower right, $938,951 dollars worth of wages and benefits supported by each physician. And you multiply that by our 14 physicians, that's our $13 million wages and benefits number that I Bailey came up with. So these numbers supported each other. And then lastly, and I know you guys will be most excited about this one, state and local tax revenue, $50,000 worth of state and local tax revenue per physician. So a little over $700,000 each year per, in total for the 14 docs. So just, there's no project that's gonna bring this much economic impact to our, our community. And I know there's a economic development meeting tomorrow. Kevin Kershiznik and Alan will be there, I'm sure, and we're gonna kind of talk about this. But I know there's various programs with the Wyoming Business Council that can match some of these funds. And I think that would be a great tool to try to get to that $3 to $4 million number. We need to get started. You know, the million-dollar donation of land by the Shoshone tribe is gonna play a, a factor in that as well. But this is, this would be a huge deal for our community. And that's about all I have. The, the only other thing that I would like to mention that I wrote down that I just wanna talk about, and I don't know if you guys, I'm just a little bit off the subject, but Blue Cross Blue Shield put out a letter in the last couple of weeks, I don't know if you guys have seen that. What's the health insurance? What's the health insurance that the city has?
Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Okay, so you guys probably all got the letter then. So Guardian has been purchased by AMR, I think, to run the ambulance service here. And Blue Cross Blue Shield is no longer a preferred provider for the ambulance service, AMR. And what that means is, I was a dentist in my former life, so I have a lot of experience with insurance, but when you agree to be a preferred provider for an insurance, you're, you're agreeing to their fee schedule. So Guardian had agreed to Blue Cross's fee schedule for ambulance services. And now it seems like since AMR purchased them, they're like, ah, we don't want to do that anymore. So now, Blue Cross will cover up to whatever that number is they had before, but now it gives Guardian, AMR, they can balance bill the rest of that ride, okay, to the patient. So around here, I have, you know, ambulance rides from a Riverton hospital to the Lander hospital are kind of the standard of care right now. My sister-in-law had to take a ride just a couple of months ago for a procedure, a general surgery procedure that should have been done here. But now, if you have Blue Cross Blue Shield, you could be balance billed for the remaining portion of that. So, I mean, that's a big deal. There's a lot of ambulance rides around here. And if you have Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance, you need to be aware of that going forward. So just another reason, I wanted to touch on it because that was just real recent, but that it's important that we figure out a way to, to improve things. So we appreciate your support, giving us the time this evening. It went a little bit longer than I, I wanted, but I'd open it up for any other questions that the council has or staff at this, at this time.
Councilman Hancock.
The, the size of facility you're proposing, how much, and, and I know this is kind of funny numbers a little bit, but we've got about, what was it, 1,800 flights or ground transportation out of county, right, in 2019? Which is about five, six a day for a year, right? Something like that? That's a lot, I think we could all say. And we hear it all the time. I, I was talking with someone the other day, and they were like, you know, when I was younger, you'd hear a Lifelight copter, and, and so they were saying, I, I'd say a prayer to myself because serious, that's got to be something significant. Somebody's getting shipped out on a helicopter. So, but now it's just a regular thing. Uh, uh, we live not too far away from the hospital. I, I hear that helicopter all the time. It's just, you get used to it, that's it. But anyway, and that's not 1,800 helicopter rides, that's divided between ground transportation. But how much would your facility be able to take a bite out of that, do you think? And I know that's hard to say.
Yeah.
But, but if you were just going to say, you know, you've been able to look at the numbers, you've been able to see, you know, what each of those have been. Of course, it's not going to take a bite out of the cardiology ones. We know that. But just, if you can estimate it or give me a general idea of what you think this can be in terms of a real benefit, because that is a benefit, rather than having to pay for a flight, and now where we can't have the Guardian kind of not-insurance program that they had. So I, I mean, what, what do you see there?
I've, I've thought about that frequently the, the last two years. Susan has told us that the hospital, when she worked, had about probably 25 to 30 transfers a month. That's air and ground? Ground and air, okay? So that's, you know, six, 700?
365 any year.
Yeah, yes. And between both facilities, about 700, between Lander. And so now we've gone to 1,800. I'd like to say we could get back to those numbers. I think times have changed just a little bit. We had doctors here that, you know, felt more comfortable handling certain things, whereas physicians now, I think times have changed just a little bit as far as not being able, you know, with malpractice and those type of things. But a big part of this is being confident where you're working. And I've sat in meetings, Councilman Bailey's been in meetings with me, with Sage West leadership, and a big part of this is when you're a doctor and you're working with a nurse that has just come in this week, and you have no idea who that nurse is and who your auxiliary staff is, and all of a sudden, something comes in and it's, you feel like, man, I could probably do this, but you look around and your team, you know, you have no idea if your team can pull it off. Well, if I'm the doctor, I'm going to say, let's fly that person out of here. So when you are, are taking the effort to pull the resources in and taking a vested interest, to me, that, that number has got to drop significantly, and I would hope to get back to that, that number. That, that's our goal. Susan, if you haven't noticed, she, she keeps us very grounded. And it is, it is going to be a challenge. You know, we talked about the two OB physicians. We're going to probably have, we're going to have to find some family practice docs that want to deliver babies to cover, and you got to work together. That's how we did it before. Lander and Riverton worked together, and that's why it worked, and we had good healthcare for both, both communities. So we feel really good about the relationships that we've developed with other hospitals, Hot Springs County, and to be able to cover those types of things, to, to limit the number of transfers coming out of here. So that was a long answer to your question, but significantly.
It's the best you can do.
Yeah.
I didn't expect, you know, well, I don't know, maybe, you know, Stroudwater, if you actually gave them that question, they could probably, you know, punch in some numbers and give you something, but it's difficult.
A lot less. And to Councilman Bailey's point, we, we have, and I, and I don't know, Tony, if I, I think I supplied that, the 18 pages of Lifelight to, so you can see, you know, they, they don't list the actual code, but they describe it as Hurt Arm Five Lifelights. I can supply that to you if, if I have not, but, I mean, it's kind of, it's shocking on there what, what things get lifelighted. Now, it doesn't give the total picture, I'll totally admit that, but there's a lot of stuff just from community members that shouldn't be lifelighted. Other question?
Mayor, if I may. So earlier you had spoke about looking at about 19, 20 beds, and then you said something about how COVID had affected that. That model you showed us, is that pre the COVID effect, or is that, is there any kind of price effect? You were saying something about maybe having to add beds or rooms or something to that nature. So does that model you showed us reflect that in it already?
Yeah, the model reflects those changes that we made, and the number of beds stayed, we added a couple beds. I think we were down around 15 or 16, but we added a few. But then we increased the square footage of those rooms. So then, now multiple patients, you can fit two patients in each room.
Okay.
And then we're going to design it so there's separate wings, so you can have a COVID wing with two patients in a room. It's to take advantage of that extra square footage.
Okay.
And then have a room, have a wing that's, you know, for your, you know, normal, everyday stuff.
Carla?
I just wanted to mention, I think something that's really important is the number of things that get missed at this hospital. It is, it's beyond ridiculous. And I, I really support what you guys are doing. It's really important for patient care, to have a hospital that supports investigating symptoms and addressing them without having to ship them out, you know? I'm dealing with something right now where they put a Band-Aid on it, they'll give you an IV, send you home. I don't know how many times that's happened, because I've lost count. And finally, something was learned. I'm, I'm speaking about my mom right now. And this is something that could have been figured out years ago. And now it's a dire situation. So I applaud what you do. I'm really, I want to support you any way I can, and I think it's great what you're doing.
Thank you, Carla.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry about your mom. It just gets back to the community-based care versus corporate-based care. I mean, I'm a businessman, I understand it, you know? Cut costs, increase profits. But when it comes to community healthcare, we can't think like that. And our, our community is suffering because of it. I'm a business owner here, two small businesses. I moved back for the long haul here. I mean, there's, there's no Plan B. This, this was it. And, you know, it is so important for me to, as the next wave of my, my employees start to retire, I'm going to have to recruit young people to come back here. And if there's not good, that's the number, I mean, it's like schools and healthcare. That's what they ask about. Talk to the real estate agents, those are the first two questions. What's that like? And here, I mean, we're kind of becoming, I don't want to be the laughingstock here when it comes to healthcare. I'm, I'm proud of this city, we deserve better. And it's, it's just so, so important that we find a way to get this done. I mean, if we don't do it, I, I worry about our community in, in the long term here, on what it's going to be like. And I think it's up to us as leaders, as a council, as community leaders, to basically look ourselves in the mirror and just say, not on our watch is this going to happen. And we have a tremendous opportunity right now. This half-cent, I, man, it was just sweet that that passed. I think, I can, I can feel an energy about our community, and I feel like if we get this done, it's kind of icing on the cake. I'm like, man, we got air service for hopefully four more years, you know? And if we can pull this off, it's going to be huge. And I'm excited about the future, but we got to work together to find a way to get this done, and we're close. Very close. Leaders around the state know about it, the word's out, and we just got to finish it. We're, we're smart people, and we can come together and just keep chipping away, and eventually, it's going to happen. So I appreciate your time this evening and look forward to working with you guys to find a way to get this done.
Court, I have a, a subject that came in to me today. I got a phone call from a gentleman here in town, quite interested in the, in the fact that we have a medical district in, in your name, Riverton Medical District. And, and he quizzed me pretty hard on what that was until we got a little bit confrontational with each other. I've been in the room when you've talked about changing that get district out. Is, is that something that you're able to do, or do you find problems with that in the, in the conversation?
Yeah. Mayor, thank you for that question, and I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. That has been, we came up with that name before I was part of the group. I want everybody to know that. That has been a, a point of contention kind of the whole way through here. We are not a government district, okay? Evidently, there were limits on the, on the names that we could choose for our 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and so Riverton Medical District was chosen. We are in the process of changing that right now. And as soon as that change is formalized, we will let you know. But we agree, it's confusing. I'm sorry you had to take that phone call today, and we'll, we'll get everybody.
That's why I get the big money.
Yeah.
Another thing that, let me try to put a bow on this. So if, if we don't have to come in for our municipal purposes and own the building and own the land, now you're back to just a straight-out loan, and we're back to the point that we need $4 million.
That's correct.
And, and what you're hoping, and, and see, I'm a simple man, I can do simple math just barely. It's nice to have Alan in the room and a few others that can help. But our economic half-cent, we need to be really careful with that. We, we appreciate that passing. I can't tell you how many hours that many of us have put in to that, to get that to go. And, and we appreciated the help that the hospital district put in. And I think your numbers are absolutely correct, and I, I think this is what we've got to get across to people, is how do we grow the environment in Riverton, Wyoming? So if we need 140 jobs of high-quality medical industry people, it's going to make a big difference in house sales, it's going to make a big difference in grocery sales, it's going to make a big difference in every facet, car sales. And so, but if we take all four years of our $600,000 and stack it in a savings account, we hit $2.4 million. And that's not really going to work, that's not going to be the way to do it. But maybe we can get smart guys in the room like Alan and Kevin and Tony and, and a few of the rest of us that know how to grow those funds and manipulate those funds without using all of those funds. Because if we don't, if we don't use those funds correctly, we won't get the voters to vote for it in four years. And, and we need that to continue to pass. So we really know, we need to go to work as a leadership group. In this conversation I took today, there was some, you know, this, this, this isn't transparent, and, you know, you're doing this stuff without approval. I don't want to buy a hospital for the city. You talk about you don't want to be the guy that gets labeled with, with that. I don't want to be the guy that stuck the city with a hospital. I don't want to stick you with the city, is the other thing I don't want to do.
Thank you.
That you got to carry around. And so if we can, if we can get together and get some smart people in the room, which requires us to share all those numbers and, and push those around. And we do have problems with Sage West. You know, I get, there's a, a new letter out there, and, and, and everybody sees these things just a little bit differently. And I think what we really need to do is get very open information that people can clearly understand. I think you're right, the bed, the, the bed count is correct. I had a hernia done in Riverton Hospital. I was out in four hours. Whether I wanted to stay or not, they showed me the door. And I think that's just the way, that's the way these hospitals are working today. And so I think you're on task, you're, you've got it marked, and you're, you're doing just exactly what needs to be done. And, and so right now, we're going to have to get in the room, and, and from this podium, I would like to ask all of those wise, experienced individuals in Riverton that know how to fund something and can come up with a funding idea or vehicle, we need their help. And we, we need that, and, and we do have this economic group. We haven't, that's, boy, is that, that's not real obvious what we're going to do yet. This Thursday, I'm going to meet with the mayors, and, and we'll get better at that. And we will put together a community that, a committee that will service our community and keep us on track like the one-cent monies do. And I want people out there to realize that we really appreciate their vote for that half-cent, and that we will be good stewards of that half-cent. We, that will not make it to the general fund of the city, there's just no way that it can. It will be kept separate. So with all of those things in mind, we do need to put a bow on this and get together, get our arms around the, the thing and figure out how to fund it. We've stirred this up to a point where everybody's excited about a new hospital, and we need to get going and make it a reality. And so anyone in the community, I, I see Mr. Moore on the, on the back row, one of the smartest guys we got in town on finances. We will be able to put those things together, but we need to be transparent so that we get everybody in the room and we get everybody's funding. I don't want to own a hospital, and I don't think any of my associates up here want to own a hospital. And so we, we will help, and we will be positive all the way through. So you tell us what to do. We want to make sure that the public knows what that is, so that they can't say we didn't want a hospital, or we don't, we didn't understand it. so that they can't say we didn't want a hospital, or we don't, we didn't understand it. All of us that have been connected to this for the two years, we're pretty knowledgeable about the pitfalls, but we got to, we got to get that information out. And I think you're doing a real good job of it. And, you know, this is a moving target. I mean, we did bonds, we tried the state funding. That $1.25 billion is going to go back with $1.16 in the coffers if the federal government and the attorney general gets his way. And so we've all sat on that Zoom call for way too long, you know? And I think that we've done the work. And I want to, I want to make sure that everybody in town knows what we're doing. So if they are opposed, or if they are for it, they can voice that opinion. And this name change would be wonderful if we could come up with that name change somewhere along the line. And other than that, does staff have anything to add to our discussion?
At this point, Your Honor, we do not.
Megan? Megan's good. Anybody else? Do you have anything further to add from the...
No, I was just going to add that COVID has kind of put a damper on our community meetings these last few months, but we plan to somehow, I mean, we've put in a lot of work, a lot of it's been the boring grinding numbers work that, but now that we're complete with that, we feel like we've got a good product to get out to the city and let them know what's going on and start to get some real momentum behind this. So I agree with you, we need to get the word out, and we'll find a way to do that.
I'm sure the paper will help us, and I think that maybe even an outdoor gathering meeting if we've got to. This is serious enough that we need to, COVID is a serious problem, but we need, we need to make sure that if people want the information, they've got it. And maybe we might find some help.
Yes, agree.
So I totally appreciate the guys. I wish the camera could take pictures of you, I don't think it can turn around. There's one, two, three, four, five committee members here. That's about half of your head staff. And you guys have worked hard for two years tirelessly. And on this conversation this morning, I had to defend what you were doing. And I will continue to. I think, I don't think anybody is trying to enrich themselves here or trying to solve community problems. And so I praise you for your efforts and thank you for your hard work. We need to be one unit and try to, try to make this thing happen. So if there's no other objections, we'll stand adjourned at 7:30. Thank you.